Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call this evening's Committee of the Whole.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this evening's Committee of the Whole. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this evening's Committee of the Whole.
Okay. All right, we're getting started now, please. Thank you. Okay, so I'll call the Committee of the Whole to order and looking for approval of tonight's agenda, please. Let's move by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor? Committee of the Whole, we don't need a secondor. None opposed, this motion is carried. Okay, we're gonna start off with a delegation this evening from Ms. Ellen Lurs and the Sioux Fall Fair. A conversation about the traffic flow and where's that at. Welcome, Ms. Lurs.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Sioux Community, actually, in regard to the road closure of Eustis. When we close Eustis for our Fall Fair and also about the road that we'd asked on Gatewood. On April 28th, 2017, council received a letter from the Legion as the Sioux Fall Fair, a nonprofit community-based organization which until 1988 was under the umbrella of the Sioux Community Association, would not be allowed to close Eustis during the fair. Each Fall Fair member is also a paid member of the Sioux Community Association as well. The Legion, too, has requested road closures for parades, as have the Chamber and the Lions, and I don't recall there being a certified flagger present, but we were being requested to have certified flaggers. We met with the Legion President and she told us her concerns, which became an issue when Shields Road was made a one-way. At the time of this road disruption, the district had promised to take Eustis Road through to move the traffic in reasonable fashion. As we all know, this has not happened, and the parking is still there to back up and drive to the west. Many times, food or garbage trucks are parked in such a way along with parking along Eustis that one cannot turn around and go back down Eustis, so they go to the Legion. The Legion lot or drive the wrong way down Shields. I've been one of those and have witnessed it countless times, as I frequent the hall due to the Fall Fair business. I met with staff and was told I needed to get a cost for an 18-foot of graveling and grading the rest of Gatewood and to get prices on bollards, which are removable posts, in case you didn't know, because I didn't know what it was. The cost of graveling going down one foot and the trucking fees are between $8,000 to $10,000. This does not include the excavating, which I would estimate about $3,000, but I don't really know, because this isn't my bailiwick, with trucking away of material. There's also material which was left at the end of Gatewood when EPCOR put in the sewer line, which I feel EPCOR is responsible for moving. The brush cutting may need a machine, or the Parks Department could clear it. Staff requested an 18-foot wide space. This would be a one-way. Bollards appear to be between $50 and $100. My estimate to make the remainder of Gatewood Road a reasonably good road for use is under $50,000. I don't have a cost for chip sealing or paving the road, but I understand that if council gives permission and priority and approves funding for staff to go to tender for this, that they can go ahead and get this road finished. We have a petition with the Legion suggested we do, the Legion President, which we didn't have much time to get it around, but we have names from people and businesses in the region and users of the Sioux Community Hall and Legion. We respectfully submit these names in the petition to have the district make this a priority to finish the project started in 2009 of the road to nowhere. This petition, I'll read you what it says. "In 2009, Shields Road was made a one-way between West Coast Road and Eustis Road with the understanding that access would be allowed from Eustis Road to Gatewood Road and onto Grant Road to allow a safe and free flow of traffic. Since the one-way in Shields was created, the Legion has been subjected to cars continually entering their exit when they find they can't turn around and using their parking lot as a driveway. The Legion, too, was actively opposed to the Shields one-way and were assured that the road would be extended to allow free and easy exit and flow of traffic due to the district's decision to alter the traffic pattern on Shields. This has also heavily impacted the users of the community hall as backing up into use has become a hazard as traffic coming from Shields and unexpectedly from the Legion and dangerous sightlines due to parking of either delivery trucks or vehicles at Mamba's or Eustis Road. We, the undersigned residents and/or users of the Sioux Community Hall and Legion, have been subjected to countless vehicles turning around in their driveways, restricted sightlines, frustrated drivers making dangerous moves and in general disrupting the character of our homes and the safety of our children, seniors, and traveling public. We therefore ask the District of Sioux to extend the road from Eustis to onto Grant and make this a priority for the Roads Department 2017." Now, we only had this petition out for a couple of days and we have 85 names on it already. There's also a letter from one of our members, I believe she sent it to you, from Marie Mills. And I had another letter, but I can't find it. That's what I was just looking for, from the Sioux Country Market. They, too, are supportive of this action. We've had monies given to us from the Legion, not the Legion, I'm sorry, from the Lions, from the Lionesses and Sioux Country Market and Fall Fair Committee. And we're holding it and that's a concern, that people are so concerned they're willing to put some money into this. I'm also going to read you what I gave to staff. "The Sioux Fall Fair is requesting a road closure on Eustis Road from the driveway entrance of the Legion to the exit from the Legion. We put barriers and cones on either side of the closure and a traffic pattern change sign on Shields Road and then onto Eustis. We could add a road closure sign. There's a parking lot available on Otter Point side. The country market would be in a space on Saturday with tents up, and on Sunday there will also be tents up for food and entertainment, pet parade. Tents will stay up overnight in front of the community hall. Barriers go up at 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on September 9th and Saturday and September 10th, Sunday. Traffic will remain a one-way in Shields with the remainder of Eustis becoming a one-way to the west and car parking off Gatewood to the left and exit out to Gatewood to the right onto Grant Road and right onto Grant, to Otter Point. The trees on Grant to the left and the trees on Otter Point to the left should be trimmed. We are requesting that the rocks on either side of Gatewood be removed and a bollard put in their place and also the piles of soil left and the end of Gatewood from EPCOR also be removed. The road needs a little grading at the end going to Grant Road and also there's a private drive exiting and entering onto Gatewood. There's also a power pole which should be marked with tape and eventually removed from that area. The brush in that area should be removed for safety's sake, as bears frequent the area and homeless are known to make homes in this region. It will need to be removed for traffic, it as the branches and things will need to be removed for traffic to move down safely as well. Permission has been granted by the large family to use their property for parking and the other property directly to the left of Eustis. The property is on our insurance document, and the document has been given to staff. The fair has been closing Eustis Road for 40 years and has operated for 104 years. The Legion would like Gatewood Road open to take the traffic out. The problem is people turning and entering their exit on a regular basis, regardless of events or not, since Shields Road was created a one-way by the district. This issue needs to be addressed and the traffic plan was never carried out. Council advised that perhaps a stop sign could be put at the end of Eustis and a one-way right to Grant and a one-way right onto Grant Road and possibly a one-way out into Otter Point, because that's not a good sightline." I have copies, I took copies from the District of Transportation Master Plan and the extension in Gatewood from West Coast Road to Grant Road is in your traffic plan. I also have some questions, because in the past, we've used barricades, the district's barricades and your cones and your safety vests, and last year they had disappeared. And I'm curious to know where they went, because there sure was an awful lot of them. And we've used them for the past, I don't know, since as long as I've been involved and they're no longer there. They were in a trailer in the back and they're no longer there. So last year, we had to go to highways to get them. And we've always made a deposit and then we bring them back. And the last year, not last year, but the year before, we actually brought back more cones than what we had because we had some donated to us. So I'm just curious as to where they went. So what I'm asking is that council would direct staff. Apparently, the staff needs to have direction from council for, what's the word I'm looking for? To put to tender to do the roadwork? To do any roadwork? They have to have that permission from you to? That's why I assume they asked me to get the prices, because they have to have permission from you to do that. They need to have funding to do that. So I'm here to ask you to please make it a priority one on your list of, put it at the top of your priorities of road networks and give staff permission to go forward with extending this road.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Lurs. Just to clarify then, so in terms of the earlier delegation that we received and council support to have this access for the Fall Fair, is that part in order then?
Is that part?
Like, in order, is that?
No, no, because staff has said that the road is not accessible. Really, it needs to be cleared. It needs to be, they want to have an 18-foot gravelled road out there and we need to deal with the private drive that goes onto there and that we still have to get flaggers to come and, certified flaggers.
Okay.
And we still have to get a road plan, which are all costs of the fairs. So from what I understood, what Counselor Pearson had said last, at the last delegation, was why not put a stop sign and a one-way and a one-way? And when you look at, when you come down, Gatewood down onto Grant Road to the left, it's clear. It's really clear, but the brush needs cutting. The only part which is, we all know, is dangerous, is coming from Grant Road onto Otter Point, but that's dangerous for everybody, so that has to be dealt with. I think it needs to be, that road has to be cut, the trees need to be cut back even further.
Okay, so I mean, actually making this a road, then that requires a bit more, because then we'd have to look at the budget, amend the budget, all those sorts of things.
Right.
In order to do that, so I was looking at just what we need to do to get rolling, to get this at least open for the fair, because just given how busy it is out there, even if we ran, like, it may not even be possible to actually make this a road in time of the Fall Fair, you see what I mean? Because even if council gave it, endorsed this, and we did a budget amendment and we progressed it, it's so busy all over this, all over the place. I'm just, I don't know, but I'm just hearing that there aren't necessarily crews available and then you're stuck with no access for the Fall Fair because of the timing. So that's where I was just curious, in terms of, I think when this came forward to council originally and we okayed it, I don't think it was the case where we expected to construct a whole road by the Fall Fair. It was just having something drivable that, to get that. And then I think, yeah, in terms of down the road, adding this to the road network would make sense when we can fit it in with everything else. So I have Counselor Pearson and Counselor Parkinson?
Yes, through the chair to Ms. Lurs. My understanding was that the motion that I made was to come, get staff to give us a report how simple it would be to put a stop sign and right turn off of Eustis onto Gatewood and a right turn onto Grant Road only, with stop signs at either end, one-way traffic. So that if we brush it out, because I wouldn't walk the road, actually, last weekend, not last weekend, the long weekend. It seems like it would be fine to me, and I don't know, I haven't heard anything back from staff yet. I think that was, my understanding was there was gonna be a staff report to see if that was feasible. That was my understanding at the time.
Can I maybe get a reply back from staff, please?
Your worship, through to Counselor Pearson, my recollection is a little bit different. I don't recollect of having a staff report come back. However, the way we were approached with regards to the utilization of Gatewood as a one-way to Grant Road was based on a more of a permanent solution for not only the Fall Fair but other activities there. If we are looking at just the utilization as we did last year, only in a different direction, rather than going out to West Coast Road, I can certainly work with the Fall Fair people. But as I said, they were looking for something, from my perspective, anyway, they were looking for something more permanent, i.e. a gate rather than bollards and things like that. But if it's just for the Fall Fair and nothing else, we can work with them. But the issue of the rocks that guard the utilization of Gatewood Road now would have to be removed and then put back after the event. We would still require some flagging people at the intersection of Grant Road and Gatewood, because the sightlines are fairly restricted. There is also the issue of the encroachment onto the neighbor's driveway as well. It is within the right of way, but it's quite an established driveway and I would certainly want to have some kind of flagging activity there. As far as the barriers go or the barricades go, I don't know what happened to them. I'm not aware of, we don't have anything in the yard anymore, but I'm certainly, if it's just for the Fall Fair, I could certainly work with them.
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Howard. That was, I think that's, maybe that was my fault, because that's what I thought I said, was just can we put a temporary stop sign there and a temporary right turn only at the other, at the Grant Road? If you didn't, if you, we wouldn't need flaggers, we had a right turn only at the end of Grant Road and a stop sign and no entrance from Grant Road, like, no, a one-way street? Because if you have that, say, it's a one-way street, if you had no entrance, people wouldn't go down Grant Road and try to turn left in there. You could only have a right turn, right turn, right turn. That was the way I kind of envisioned it, sorry.
Yeah, your worship, through to Counselor Pearson. I certainly understand what you're saying, but I still am a little bit leery about that intersection location and people trying to do silly things, as they will try to do. But I'm certainly able to work with the Fall Fair people to achieve this and perhaps rather than, you know, a set of flaggers, maybe one flagger for each day at that particular location. But if it's, but if it's just for the one, this one-year event and not more, not something more permanent as was proposed to me, you certainly work with it.
And at the end of that, then, at the end of the day, that, then it would just be shut off again at the end of the Fall Fair, so it was just temporarily opened up, alleviates that problem. And it worked well last year, so.
But I think, if I may, last year, the exit went the other way.
We went the other way down West Coast Road and we had to go to the Department of Highways to get that and it was a very, it was a very frustrating thing.
Okay.
The whole thing.
So you don't want to go that way again?
No, we're not going that way again, because it's way too costly. And this isn't only for the Fall Fair, it's for all events and that's why we asked for the rocks to be removed, because each time you have the rocks, to get somebody to get the rocks moved, as we know that you can't get contractors, because they're busy. And last year, as I said to Mr. Howard, is that he had to call us, call me four times to get the rocks put back, because I couldn't get contractors to put the rocks back. And it's costly, as you know, it's between $150 to $250 to move a machine. So that's why we asked for either a gate, for a gate. And we got some pricing on gates and Mr. Howard suggested that we get a bollard, which I didn't know what it was, that's why I told you what it was. And so he also said, I asked him for the price and he said, didn't know, so I did some research and it's between $15 and $100. So, and probably we could get somebody to make them up, but that's another thing. But if bollards were put in on both, on Gatewood and on both ends, West Coast side and Grant Road side, it would make it a lot easier for all people that are having events, when there's an event to be held, that could just come to the district and say, we're going to have an event, and blah, blah, here's your keys, open it up.
Well, I think, if I may, Ms. Lurs, thank you for that. If it's the bollard and it's something that's going to be permanently on municipal property, then it's my opinion that should be a district expense and not the Fall Fair. That's just me.
I agree.
You know, I think it's the case where we sort of need to look at this in phases, and I'll go to Counselor Parkinson in a second, is do something so that you have this access for the Fall Fair, because you're gonna need it for your materials and the like and the plan, and then it's done, you can go on and focus on other things. The other part, I think, on actually making this a road, would be something, that would be a report that we would want to receive back from staff at a later time. It would probably be that we would put that into our budget this fall for a road project next year, because we're going out on our, the roads that we've immediately identified that need work done, and then we can look at that. I think that might make more sense. But at least this way, you have the circuit going for the Fall Fair, but if the bollards are there in place, because there could be something else that comes up down the road where another event needs to use this, I think then it's municipal property and it would be a permanent thing that would remain in place there. And I don't think, I personally don't think it should be the Fall Fair that raises an expense.
I agree, and that's, that was, when I went there, it was for temporary, it was for temporary. I asked for a gate and that's what I was talking with staff about, but I didn't know what it was that was required, what we need to do. And so staff told me it had to be 18-foot gravel roadway and that I needed to get costs for it, so.
But I think that's where there's been a disconnect here, is what I'm hearing, obviously, in terms of.
So that's why I brought it forward.
Yeah, what the intent, so I'm glad that you're back, so we can just sort this out, but I think that's where there has been a bit of a disconnect in terms of what our expectations were. Counselor Parkinson, please. Can I just ask, sorry, that whoever's clicking to stop clicking? Thank you.
Through you, your worship. I would like to see that the Eustis Road is actually punched through. There are so many events going on in that area beside all the Legion parades that they do. They have probably four or five a year. You have the Sioux Fall Fair, you have the summer and the winter markets there. You have the celebrations of life, there's weddings going on there. So there is a great need for the road to be, to go right through, and we've been waiting quite some time for this to take place. And I do believe that it should be on our priority list of roads to be done, because it's a benefit for the community as a whole and not just one section of the community. I would also ask, we have the parking lot that we're now leasing over on the corner of Otter Point and Eustis there. I've talked to numerous people that do not realize that we have the parking there, because the sign is rather small. And so I was telling them at the Legion where they didn't know there was parking there, the people at the Community Association, even shop, people that are store owners did not know that we had that parking space, even though we've advertised. But I think that instead of having a small sign that's only two feet, maybe it should be a lot bigger, so people realize that we do offer parking for downtown for all of these events that are taking place. Thank you.
If I may as well, part of what the Legion was opposed to us closing Eustis Road was because of the traffic pattern and they were looking at, perhaps if we changed that, that wouldn't be an issue. But, but our catalog is ready, I was to pick it up today, but I haven't had time. And our catalog is very clear that Eustis Road will be closed and that's where the country market is on Saturday, that's where the pet parade is on Sunday and has been for the last 40 years. And I sure hope that that's not going to be an issue, because if it is, the fair is done.
Okay, so are we clear on what we're doing here? We're getting one-way up Gatewood, temporary stop sign, right turn only onto Grant Road, and have it reasonably clear for a vehicle, so choose, someone chooses to drive to go that way and that council would still like to see some form of a report returned later to make this into a more, a permanent road and to go into the capital plan. Is that good? Okay, Counselor Pearson, please?
Through the chair, so for the next regular council meeting, could we have a discussion on placement of bollards or something like that? Could we get that on the agenda?
Yeah, you'll need to make some form of a motion so that we can move it to the regular council meeting.
Yep.
So what would you?
Move that staff work with preparing a report for us about the placement of bollards as opposed to rocks, so that there's an interim solution for any event that comes along and the report on the feasibility of using Eustis Road, including, from Mr. Howard's point of view, safety concerns at the Grant Road, if staff feels that that's necessary on the event days and things like that, so.
So staff to prepare a report to council on bollard placement instead of rocks and temporary?
Usage.
Usage of?
The Gatewood extension.
Gatewood extension. Okay, this is Committee of the Whole, so there's no secondor required. Discussion on the motion, Ms. Lurs, you need to turn off your microphone, because now it's with committees, so I can't have you discussing this.
I wanted to make sure that the Eustis Road closure is included.
Yeah, that we understand already, so, but I'm sorry, you can't speak to the motion, is all. Okay, anything from, further from council? Okay, I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, this motion is carried. And now, Ms. Lurs, you just want clarity or confirmation that Eustis will be closed? To facilitate this, okay. For the fair. Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Lurs. Okay, so we're going to move into our report section. There's public input included in each individual item here, so as we go through this, we'll invite the members of the public forward for each particular item. So we'll start with 5.1, which is the Official Community Plan Review Update. And I'll turn to our planner. Welcome, Ms. Rice, please.
Mic on, okay. Okay, I'll do a quick recap of what we've done so far and then hopefully we'll dive into some very interesting discussions today. So, first slide. Sarah. Oh, that was on there, sorry. Okay, yay, thank you. Okay, so, thank you, everyone. The Official Community Plan is the district's most important planning tool. It helps to influence the way our community grows and develops by guiding how land is used. Land use and development decisions influence all parts of our daily lives, how our community looks. influence all parts of our daily lives, how our community looks and feels, where we live, work, and play. The OCP must satisfy requirements of provincial legislation and be consistent with the capital regional district's regional growth strategy. In August of 2016, under the direction of council to review the OCP Bylaw Number 400, staff produced a Terms of Reference for Charting the Official Community Plan Review Process to ensure that an appropriate level of public engagement in existing plan revisions could take place within a reasonable timeframe. And so, as everyone is aware here, we are basically located at the Star. We've done a fair bit of community consultation to date and we're just sort of in the, or, primary stages of drafting conceptual ideas. A summary of what has been achieved so far through the engagement process is the three draft goals, which is to protect the environment, celebrate our community, and build our economy, and our twelve key directions, which include connecting, basically having more connectivity, ensuring land and, I won't get into it, but future generations securing, green design, celebrating our culture, having safety first, embracing community, securing our food, preserving ecosystems, striving for excellence, and having innovative and efficient infrastructure, and keeping things affordable, as well as buying local to create jobs. At our last Committee of the Whole meeting, we had a roundtable discussion where council came up with some key themes that they believed were important, that the OCP should consider, and there was a cross sort of examination between the key themes that were derived from the public engagement consultation to date. And so we've just helped to broaden the key themes for the revised OCP. So today, this brings us to today, we will be digging into settlement and looking at land use designations. And so, patterns of rural settlement indicate much about the history, economy, society, and minds of those who created them, as well as the land itself. So, in developing proposed planning documents, staff has taken into consideration feedback provided by community and council, as well as recognized city planning settlement patterns. So, looking at Suk's past, human beings over time, have over time formed villages, and they often live together for safety reasons, for friendship, and to share services. Early settlements take on distinctive patterns based on the shape of the land around them. So, this is very, you know, grade nine geography or earlier, but it's good to sometimes recap some of this information. So we start out with a very dispersed settlement pattern where buildings are spread out to maximize land resource use, often found in upland areas. We then tend to migrate to a nucleated settlement pattern where buildings are grouped together and often found in lowland areas where small communities form for social reasons. And then we eventually evolve to include a linear settlement pattern where the buildings are constructed in lines and often found on steep hillsides. But in Suk's case, our linear formation evolves for three, out of three sources, two being transportation-based, one being the water's edge, and boats traveling along the water's edge, Highway 14 being the second transportation influence, and then thirdly, having the steep hillside. Come on. Okay, so just a blast of, from the past, of where things may have originated, when things were far more dispersed, becoming more settled. And here we have the community members from the thirties and fifties gathering. I find these pictures really amazing, especially this one, I think it says nineteen thirty-six. They really don't look any different today. Okay, so, for forty years, we can see certain changes to the landscape from nineteen seventy-seven, the black and white, obviously, to two thousand seventeen, but not that much. I think, obviously, the biggest changes happened prior to the seventies, as we know. We don't have any photo aerials, unfortunately, of that period, obviously. So, just wanted to recap some of the history of planning theory in, as far as Suk is concerned. And one of the big, the origins for planning theory looks at this Burgess Concentric Ring model, which is a model of the internal structure of cities in which social groups are spatially arranged into a series of rings. The Concentric Ring Zone Model was first used to explain the distribution of different social groups within urban areas. That is also coupled, so that's the one with the donut, basically. It couples with the bid-rent theory, which is a geographical economic theory that refers to how the price and demand for real estate change as the distance from the central business district increases. It states that different land users will compete with one another for land closely located to the center of the city. That's the far-left one. Now, the center one is called the Sector Model, and it's a model of the internal structure of cities in which social groups are arranged around a series of sectors or wedges radiating out from the central business district and centered on major transportation lines. And so, obviously, again, Highway 14 is a key factor in that. And then, over time, different areas attract different activities by chance or by environmental factors, and as the cities grow, activities within it grow outwards in a wedge shape from the central business district. And generally, the central business district is also referred to as our downtown core, and as we know, that's something we're working on here. The third, is sort of a more evolved version, is Harrison Olman's Multiple Nuclei Model, and basically, they argue that cities do not grow in a single nucleus at all, but by several separate nuclei, and each acts as like its own growth point. This theory was formed based on the idea that people have greater movement due to increased car ownership. The increase of movement allows for the specialization of regional centers, and the model is suitable for large expanding cities. The number of nuclei around which the city expands depends on situational, as well as historic factors. So, you know, well, I'll show you. Here's sort of a synopsis of, it's a fictional city, but you could almost imagine how, in my mind, anyway, I thought this was a good replication of how Suk has kind of evolved. There's a lot of similarities, being on the water's edge, taking into the concentric ring formations, and then looking at the different sort of outposts of activity that have happened around the district. So, why are we looking at these models? The reason is because from the census material that recently has been provided, actually, it's not the two thousand sixteen yet, it's still the two thousand and eleven, so it'll probably be more prevalent with the two thousand sixteen, once it's completely provided in full. But the projection is that we'll be adding another twelve thousand people over the next twenty years. So, to accommodate this type of growth, we would be looking at about forty-eight hundred additional housing units, or, which would basically have two-point-five people per unit, and within that, we will require ranging tenures and affordability levels. The good news with this is, is that our current zoning bylaw, we've done in-house, just played around with some of the sizes of the land, the lots and things like that that exist. Within our existing zoning today, we can accommodate eighteen to about twenty-four hundred of those, so about half of that already without changing anything. So when you think about that, that's kind of interesting. There's a lot of gaps there that, just given what we have, we can take away half of that. So where will we put this extra, well, twenty-five thousand people total? Who are they? What can they afford? And what are the things do we need to consider? Our roads, our sewer, job creation? Where and how do we relocate these? So, and one of the things is that we do have a choice on how Suk will grow. Let's hope that it's not like this. So we have sprawl dwellers pay only half the cost of roads, eighty-one percent of Canadians live in cities, but half of those eighty-one percent live in the suburbs. So we have a lot of people coming. How to avoid sprawl? We can have urban and spatial policies, sorry, urban and rural spatial policies can foster economic growth and development while preventing environmental degradation and climate change. There's a wide range of planning tools available to us, including Smart Growth Model, Compact City Model, Green Growth Strategies, Sustainable Cities Models, all kinds of multi-generational planning, ecological models. There's a variety out there that we can bring in to help us adapt over time. So in order to implement these design elements, staff has developed land use descriptions and a land use map to provide visual reference to the types of developments that can be encouraged through the OCP and zoning bylaw to help Suk realize a better quality of life for residents while also meeting the community's goals in key directions. So, the next little section here, we're going to talk about neighborhoods and land use. So based on our feedback from council and public engagement process in the fall, I've prepared, well, we'll start with a neighborhood focus map, followed by some land use designation maps and descriptions, that, again, the goal of them is to try and achieve what the public and the community and council has asked for. These are draft maps and descriptions, and their goal is to stimulate discussions and conversations and understanding about future land use in Suk to help with better decision-making that hopefully is informed by some established planning theory. So, what's a neighborhood? A neighborhood is generally defined spatially as a specific geographic area and functionally as a set of social networks. There's, a neighborhood is a spatial unit in which face-to-face social interactions occur. The personal settings and situation where residents seek to realize common values, socialize youth, and maintain effective social control. Viewing Suk through a neighborhood lens could potentially allow us to evaluate our physical, economic, environmental, and social layers on a meaningful scale that can help find solutions to certain issues and improve quality of life, again, on a local level. So, the District of Suk is fifty-six point six-two square kilometers, and as many of you know, I've been here now, not, about a year and a half, and coming here, I think that was one of the things that became a little bit overwhelming, was there's this massive expanse and people spread out throughout it. And I find it interesting for council to, for you to, it's a big job to think of someone living in Whiffen Spit versus someone living in Grouse Nest and what their needs are. And so, as a planner, those are things we think of, too. And so this was a first crack at potentially establishing some neighborhood boundaries, and these ones, for instance, are actually existing and they're based on census numbers, as well as some of the asset information, asset management information that we already have within the district. You know, I think there's thirteen of them here. We wouldn't necessarily have to stick to this configuration. This is, you know, maybe we have six, but maybe this works, and some of it is about the identity of each neighborhood. And so, this is just a way to filter some of the information that is available to us for decision-making. And so it's a lens that, for the OCP, I was thinking that perhaps you would like to discuss and see if it might be a way to potentially organize some of the information that we have available to us. So, next, we can move on to land use designations. The first step towards drafting the OCP includes general descriptions for discussion purposes surrounding land use and land use designations. Land use designations are meant to match the lands in a planned area to the goals, objectives, and policies set out in the OCP. So sometimes, this little cartoon is kind of, is supposed to be a spoof, and it's basically saying, sometimes the best way to establish goals and objectives is to determine what we don't want in the community and to be able to recognize ways to do things better. Because I don't think we want off-leash teen parks, things like that. There's all kinds of things. So these, this is a pictograph, more or less, or an infographic of sorts, of some, some land use designations that have basically been drawn to try, again, to pull on the feedback from the community and, and come up with, you know, some visions as to where and how our development might be located, what it might look like, the kinds of things that we're trying to encourage, and the kinds of things, you know, we're trying to protect. So, I've given council each paper copies of these. If they like, I think it might be a little bit easier to read. But, so we can start out, actually, do we start with parks? Yeah. So, if you look at the transect, as we go through this sheet, it starts from basically the very dispersed and moves into the more urbanized, higher-density type of land use. And so we have this column with the, sort of the cartoony shows, obviously, density. You have an aerial view that reflects what that might look like, and these are from parts of Suk. And then sample images of the type of feel that that particular landscape might provide and the kind of community that we would be trying to create there. So we've got parks, plazas, and natural areas. Sorry, I can't even read this without my goggles. These lands contain, so, oh, sorry. Okay, parks, trails, and plazas, open spaces, valleys, watercourses, ravines, wetlands, portions of waterfront, water access, golf courses, and cemeteries are all public spaces managed by the district or other public agency. Their purpose is to protect or enhance existing natural amenities or key public destinations. Another land use designation, which could be tied into that or remain separate, this is open to discussion, would be pedestrian connectivity corridors. So the aim of these connectivity corridors is to secure public access to key destinations with the intent to providing active and alternative transportation options and increase quality of life for residents of all ages. Pedestrian connectivity corridors are easements primarily used for the movement and transmission of energy, people, and goods. Pedestrian connectivity corridors can also protect, enhance, and restore key historic infrastructure such as cultural, trade, or wagon routes, which can be, which can contribute to local tourism industry and increase the quality of life for residents. The agricultural resource lands, they're farmlands protected from suburban development. Their intent is to maintain Suk's valuable rural landscape, promote local employment opportunities, celebrate resource-based heritage and culture, and secure local food. This designation provides key economic development and employment opportunities within the agricultural food production, agritourism, farm market, and other agriculture-based value-added sectors of the local economy. Most of Suk's ARLs are protected by the ALC, which is the Agricultural Land Commission, within the Agricultural Land Reserve, as well as by the District of Suk. Then we have rural lands and rural neighborhoods, and basically, they're very similar, except one is within the, the, outside of the growth boundary while the other one is located within it. So they're typically larger acreages supporting forestry and agriculture sectors. Development may include low-scale residential use with a few services or amenities nearby. There can be service by private septic or, and/or wells and may or may not have access to CRD water. Then, we start to infill a little bit with neighborhood infill. These lands contain a wide range of residential housing forms that promote affordability, sustainability, and aging in place. Quality residential design and a diverse range of housing options within a lower-scale buildings are encouraged. They have parks and schools, local institutions, small-scale stores and shops serving the needs of area residents. And then, commercial, neighborhood commercial nodes are recognized for their importance to the district economy by providing employment and commercial neighborhood services in primarily residential neighborhoods. They promote opportunity for residents to access services and convenience items without having to rely on private automobiles to purchase basic items and services. The regeneration lands, they're designed to inspire and revitalize unproductive, rundown, or unique areas. They support a range of primary uses, including commercial, industrial, institutional. The residential use would be secondary in this designation. These lands will attract investment, encourage adaptive reuse of buildings, and remediate brownfield sites. They establish exemplary environmental standards, and they will encourage quality construction and landscape design. Pedestrian scale and transit will be used to breathe new life into underutilized streets and neighborhoods. And lastly, we have mixed-use employment lands, which intend to promote a range of quality commercial, residential, and institutional uses in single or mixed-use buildings, sorry. Employment lands provide space for new jobs and homes to meet a growing population, allowing people to live, work, and shop in the same area. They're transit-oriented areas, pedestrian scale in development, providing mixed uses. They create animated, attractive, and safe neighborhoods day and night, and the scale and intensity of development will increase closest to the town center. Development is mindful to protect water views, avoid solar shading. Parks, trails, open spaces, and utility areas also support employment lands. So that, in a nutshell, is the overview of the designations, and then you'll see you have a copy of the canvas to fill in the blanks. And so this particular iteration was drafted primarily on the sewer service area. So basically, the extent of the neighborhood infill, the pink, you can see there's a red, the sewer service area is in magenta, and And everything inside that has been designated at this point as neighborhood infill. And then everything, if you look at the green lands, the regeneration lands, they're quite interesting because they're areas that may have been brownfield sites or that may have had some change of use over time. And this really could potentially open up, you know, things that could happen there. But I think in doing so, we, again, have to be mindful of having high-quality environmental standards and good building design. Is there any? Sorry. I think that's probably a good place for me to pause, if you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Ms. Rice, for both the PowerPoint and you've provided it within the report to council and as well as the work here in the sheets. It's very intense, interesting work that you're doing, so thank you very much for your efforts. There were sort of two things that sort of came up for me that council needs to talk about, well, amongst many others, but one of them being the land use designations and sort of the description that's been provided in this document and the neighborhood design. And then also, so it's sort of those things. We have the designations and the descriptions in them. And then also the neighborhood breakdown, I believe it was 13, that you had mentioned, and just where we see that. That's just sort of started the conversation. Of course, there's other points in the light that you made, but we also want to continue, Ms. Rice, working on this, so this would be a good time to sort of have those conversations. It's interesting, in the earlier slide where we talked about the CRD and its regional growth strategy, with all of that being on whole, I'm guessing, then, that we go with the one that's currently in place, which is, I think, the 2003, until the other one, the newer one, gets the sustainability strategies sorted, then that's the prevailing document that we need to work with until there's a shift. Okay? So other thoughts from council? Councilor Casper, then Councilor Loggins, then Pearson?
Yes. There's one area, and I think it's north of Grant Road, where it shows the neighborhood infill, but it's outside the sewer service area. It's hard to point out. You know, I can point it out on here.
Through your worship to Councilor Casper, maybe if there's certain exact sites, you can show me, and I can have them corrected in the mapping, perhaps, because that's easy enough to do, no problem.
Right. So what, you know, I was under the impression that where we would have infill would be based on our sewer system, as you outlined. Correct? Okay, good. Thanks.
Councilor Loggins and Pearson?
Ms. Rice, you are a gem. This is awesome. I love that we get to have you. So thanks for being a part of the District of Suk and doing all of this work along with the team that helped you. I really love how you've laid this out. And my comments would be that I think the public parks and the connectivity, I like that they're separated. I think that Suk is so spread out that if we were to put those two together, we might lose the connectivity piece. And I think that through my work with Haste, one of the things I've discovered is that Suk is actually excellent at its connectivity corridors. And if we can continue that and keep it going, that would be great. So I like that it's separate, so it's not forgotten. I also, like, one of my favorite parts about this is having the shops in the neighborhood infill areas. I think that's something that we're lacking and something that would be really beneficial to Suk. And a lot of this is sort of occurring naturally, so it's nice to see it laid out in a form that makes sense and using data and color-coded on a nice map. So that's really helpful, and I appreciate that. In terms of the number of neighborhoods, my thoughts would be that this is an excellent starting point to perhaps have discussions with the neighborhoods to see where some could fit together and perhaps where some different boundaries could lie. So I think you're totally heading in the right direction there and would trust that you know what you're doing and have enough data from the community to kind of form that. I don't think I would feel comfortable just making decisions on that without speaking to each of the neighborhoods. So I think that the work that's been done to put those together is excellent, an excellent start. And it will really jumpstart a lot of really awesome community discussions. I think that's the part I'm most excited about, is that you can see the locations where you could have these community forums and bring people together and have little street parties and talk about their neighborhoods. So yay, I'm really excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loggins. I'd like to, can I just show you guys this quickly? I forgot this part. So this is the breakdown of the neighborhoods, and it's really interesting because until you see it this way, it crafts a whole new image of what that particular neighborhood might look like. And you may have seen this in the PDF, but I thought we could just quickly cruise through them just to show everyone. And then the names of them, again, are completely open. We haven't, you know, we just had to give them something for the purpose of discussion So just different lenses. I know someone that I showed this to said, "I can't believe, you know, that that particular neighborhood is, has so much ALR, they had no idea," because you don't focus in on it that closely generally. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Councilor Pearson, please.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation, and I think you're capturing the essence. And, you know, to capitalize on the neighborhoods, it's interesting is that a lot of these neighborhoods, if you go online to buy a house in Suk, these neighborhoods, a lot of these neighborhoods are identified by our real estate agents already. Very interesting that they're very similar or they're very overlaid into some of those areas. I have a couple of specific questions around the regeneration lands. And I see that you've, and this map may be smaller than I can see with my eyes, but the whole of CalTAS and Road is in that regeneration land use category? Is that right? Right from between CalTAS and Idlemore Road? And that top half certainly seems to be different types of land than the bottom half, to me, as an onlooker, because that's that industrial feel down to about the bottom of where Suk Rentals has our...
Absolutely. You know, and we can revisit these and maybe have community feedback, whatever, you know, the process is that we want to go from here. The regeneration land, you know, it's, the one thing about it is that residential is secondary, but there's still, you can still have residential, right? And so it's about, I think, being open-minded, perhaps, in seeing what mixes in this day and age can actually fit with proper environmental and design considerations. I know when I was in Toronto a month ago or so, you know, we were down in the shipping terminal, and they have a grocery store right there and, you know, a picnic park right next to, you know, the shipping lane, and there's brand-new funky condos going in just across the road. So it's happening in other places, you know? It's just about making it work. And these are very vibrant communities, and they're all, you know, accessible by bike.
Yeah. And thank you for that. It's just, and I just wanted to raise that point, is these are the conditions in which we face challenges when zoning comes up and zoning discussions come up, is that somebody sees this as regeneration land, and you've put some really nice homes and some maximum density around the outside on the lower parts of CalTAS, and then suddenly, they will be the people that show up at meetings and ask us about that. So that's something that I was concerned about. The other one that, for me, is that, and again, I'm looking at sort of the little technical pieces here, that is that you call rural neighborhoods, and that's your blue colors, and I think it's kind of following our gateway residential on the eastern part of the map here. The one area that I think also that I'm concerned about is that piece that's on the Whiffan Spit Peninsula, I'll call that, because I really think that that's got some high-density areas in there. They're on common drainfields down there now, and if I'm thinking to the future, that's probably where our sewer expansion would go, is down, what I call the Whiffan Spit Peninsula. Now, I'm only speaking for myself, but that would be an area that I would be concerned about as well. But I like the essence of what you're showing here. And for me, that the OCP has to be that future-looking document. And there's a couple of areas that I would like to see just changed. But overall, the concept of this is fantastic, and you've done some really good work, really cool. So thank you very much.
Other comments from members of council? Okay. I'd like to open the microphone up to any members of the public that would like to make comment on tonight's presentation so far.
I don't quite understand where the agricultural lands...
Sorry, Ms. Lures, I just need your name and address for the record.
5526 Suk Road, Ellen Lures. Where the growing area is, where that, not necessarily ALR land, but where the growing area for growing food, where is that in part of the plan? I don't see that in the designations. It's kind of difficult, actually, to see the whole plan.
So I think that's the orange, sort of peachy, peachy sections are the agricultural...
Those are ALR land?
Is that ALR and also existing?
They are, at this point, sorry, through worship to Mrs. Lures, the ALR and agricultural lands are both summarized in the peach designation on this map.
They're both together, so anything that is definitely ALR is there, and anything that is out of the ALR but is farmed is also in the same category?
Correct.
Okay. So that's not very much land...
At this point, it's no net loss. This is what it looks like in one place, so we can...
So it really isn't enough land for growing food for a population that's supposedly going to double in the next 20 years? So I don't think, like, I don't know that there's an agricultural plan that really fits into this. I don't think that that's ever been past our agricultural plan, and I don't see where it is in this plan either. It's still not there. We're still not there with the agricultural plan. And if we're going to be self-sustaining, we need to look at the agriculture. It's not just growing people. You have to grow food in order to be self-sustaining, and you have to also have access to water, good, clean, healthy water. It has to all flow together. And I'm having a little bit of trouble with this, with the plan, reading it. It's too technical for myself. I'd like to see a little, like, that map blown up and more.
Probably, maybe what would be helpful as we move forward is taking, I think that's this map here, and then if it can be made into like a map book, kind of like the slides, where there, this is then broken into like 20 sheets, and then each sheet is bigger, because then it would be much bigger. Is that sort of your meaning, where you can see this broken down?
Well, yes. And an explanation, what does it mean? I mean, there isn't really much, a lot of words that go with the explanation for these land use designations or... I mean, I know a lot of work went into it, but I don't see, I don't, it doesn't spell out to me. It really doesn't communicate to me very well. I'm having trouble with it. This is all Greek to me. I'd just like to see it spelled out a little better. Our old OCP, I think, was easier to read, and I know there's a lot of words in it, yes. But sometimes words are very good in order to explain things better. When you get just points, it doesn't really spell out what that means. And just to have the peachy pink to say this is agie land or ALR land, and it isn't really enough, and what can you grow on it, all that sort of thing. There has to be more discussion around it, because just because it's ALR, as we all know, just because it's ALR, it might be good for growing hay, but it might not be good for growing food, for instance. Or it might be a wetland. I mean, those kind of things have to be looked at. There's, it's, having sat through that last OCP for three and a half years, we were looking through a lot of those kind of things, too. You can't just say this land is good for this, this land is good for that, until you actually look at the land and see what it's capable of, even for housing. Just some concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Lures. Mr. Howitt, and then Councilor Parkinson?
Your worship, just to maybe bring some clarity, the presentation put forward by Ms. Rice tonight is premised to create a dialogue as we move forward for the public input. And I think the concerns brought forward by Ms. Lures could be, certainly, it was anticipated that we would get questions, and certainly, this isn't etched in stone tonight. It's just a dot, or it's just a way to get the, to perform the next exercise, and that's to include the public in having dialogue with regards to the OCP and clarification on land use designations, et cetera, as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Parkinson?
Through your worship, it was along the same lines. I think the presentation is well-done. And I think by the public not having the map and seeing what the designations are is very difficult for them to see what we can see, because when I look at the map, it is clearly stated out what belongs where and what the write-up is with it. And I think it's very well-done. Thank you.
Okay. So there'll be more to come, Ms. Lures, over the series. Any other members of the public with comments?
Okay. Jeff Bateman, 7083 Briarwood. Very well-done, very interesting. As you noted with that star on your progress chart, this is like the early stage of this discussion. So I look forward to seeing greater outlines. You know, one thing I'd like to see, it's taken me a while to learn the current existing zoning, I'm slowly getting there, but now it's being changed entirely. So perhaps in the next iteration of this, you can take, for example, the Technical Industrial Center zoning and pair that up with the new zoning, right? Or where does that fit? That'd be under regeneration lands, would it?
So some of these discussions, we will, we'd be able to do a bit of a cross-analysis, but perhaps it might be easier, rather than do complete comparison, that we sort of have new designations.
Holy new language.
Yeah. And if we can, just because I think we're hoping to have something that's very simple, but not losing anything. And so this is the challenge that lies before us. But there will be more details, absolutely.
And will you be utilizing the same formula as the current OCP, where under each zoning we have goals, objectives, policies, and action items? Or will it, well...
We are required to have a certain amount of information, but a lot of the information in the existing OCP is challenging to deal with because it provides too much information for that level of document. Some of that information would belong, perhaps, in council's strategic plan or should be reserved for refreshing the zoning bylaw. And so we're trying to, I think, is what I'm gathering from people, make a document here for the OCP that's very simple and very high-level, that is giving us a vision for where we're going for the future with very general statements. And then the details will go in perhaps a revised agricultural plan, zoning bylaw, et cetera.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And finally, I agree with Ebony, that on the east side of town, the trails are fantastic. On the west side, from Otter Point over to our Whiffan Spit Peninsula neighborhood, it's difficult. We have to cross private land, and so hopefully, that can be addressed under this new pedestrian connectivity corridor. Thanks.
Yes. And of course, we have areas that we need to improve upon, but I'm currently working with the City of Colwood, the City of Langford, and the municipality of, or the District of Machosen. And ours are by far, I would say, in my personal opinion, well ahead of other communities.
Other comments from members of the public this evening on the official community plan
Herb Haldane, three-one-one-eight-C, Otter Point Road. I don't know a whole bunch about community plans overall, but I know this one's already 10 times better than the one we've been working with. Sook's area, if you think about it, even though it shows all these different colors up there, still, our actual growth area, where we're allowed to, community residential and town center, so it takes up 23% of our actual mass. So, if we have all this landmass, most of it's not being used for growth. So, when you look up there and you see ALR land in the town center, and there's lots of it, Ellen makes some points about food security and stuff, but I defy you to drive down any street in Sook and show me where there's a cornfield. Show me where there's all these plants growing for all this food security. It doesn't exist. We've got some chickens, some people even do some small gardens, even Woodside Farm, which is 68 acres or something like that, has a little tiny garden there, and they do their own little roadside stand. But they have some animals, they have a few things. Even in Ellen's case, I mean, she has a smaller piece of property, but it's not even in the ALR, but it's horticultural use. When it comes down to it, and I know Counselor Casper is an advocate of keeping ALR land, because the government back in '75 decided they were going to sterilize a bunch of land. But realistically, it should be up to municipalities to decide land use. If there was a whole bunch of need for all this food, I would like to find out on a map where all this food's being grown so far. So, if we're going to, you know, double our population in the next 10 or 20 years, and we're asking for people to grow more food, number one, you have to give them a way to do it financially, so it's feasible. It's not feasible right now. It's cheaper to buy a bag of peas from Costco than it is to go grow yourself a garden in your backyard. But people do it because of better quality of food, or because they want to exercise, and so on and so forth. So, I don't have any issue. And I grow stuff in my own place. But I don't claim to be a horticulturist, and I don't claim to be able to help feed the nations, because I grow, you know, a couple of bags of peas every year. When it comes down to it, in this case here, we're trying to do the best we can. We need connectivity to be able to do these trails you're talking about. I believe the trail thing is just as important, so are roads, sidewalks, getting people around, or getting people moving in the town. We have a riparian rights regulation in Sook here, and we use all the land, and we sterilize it with riparian areas that you're not allowed to walk through, you're not allowed to cut any trees down, do anything with. But that's really our guaranteed land that we get from all the development that comes up, and that's where our trail system should be. We walk through all the woods and bushes now. What difference does it make if we put a trail through? And the thing is, we're not even consistent in how we do it. Some of our riparian areas have trails through them, and then other ones don't. But when we originally set up that OCP back in the day, it was supposed to travel along that whole Knott's Creek, all the way down until you joined up through different places to get to Whiffen Spit, to get to Woodside Farm, because at one time, we thought maybe there was going to be some deals with the District of Sook done on that land. That was going to be our connectivity. You've got a water system that needs to go right from our border all the way up Otter Point until you hit the CRD lands. And if you get to the CRD lands there, you'll notice where the new CRD building is, all those lands up on those hillsides there, even though some of them are crown lands or private, there's trails that run through all of them. They go all the way down to the bottom, right down to the water on the other side. They connect West Coast Road, they connect Sellers Drive. There's a labyrinth of maze of trails and roads that go all the way through there. So, you want connectivity. We have to kind of get into making it happen by making Otter Point. And if we have to put in a water line, think about the whole idea of digging in this big, huge path, do a water line all the way up there. You can incorporate a trail system or an off-road at the same time. There's not a whole lot of road dedication or road access right now. But I'm sure people in the neighborhoods who are wanting to redevelop lands and so on would be more than happy to give up pieces of land to be able to create water to their neighborhoods or their areas. And, of course, the CRD would be ecstatic if somehow they could get potable water out that way, because they've got wells that are failing, and people are struggling to even be able to afford water at $180 for a truckload and so on. This new community plan has a lot of options and a lot of fixes in it that the old plan didn't have. If you look outside of our sewer-specified areas, excuse me, right now, we took every piece of land, we sterilized it to this RU4 designation, which is just absolutely wrong. So, that means that every single piece of property that is non-conforming, and there, I would probably guess to say there's a thousand of them, you take all of Whiffen Spit, end of Grant Road, West Coast Road, you take all of Henland, all those places have now been sterilized to the point where if they want to build a garage, they want to do anything with their backyard with a deck, they all have to get a variance, or they all have to rezone, because now we put them into this RU4, which has these huge setbacks. They have the huge expectations when you're trying to do stuff on your property. And those people on Whiffen Spit, they all have a shared drain field and so on. Those are 1,000 square meter lots. They're less than a quarter of an acre. And if somebody wants to put a suite over top, or add on to their back deck, or things like that, they're all non-conforming. And the only way to get it in is to go through this long, arduous process of rezoning, or coming up with a variance permit, and they all have to come out in front of you guys. So, that's just time-consuming. So, if you would do it, and in the OCP we had back in 2006, and the, and our zoning bylaw, well, guess what? We recognize those 1,000 square meter, even though they're outside of the sewer area. We recognize that people were entitled to have different setbacks in 1,000 square meter lot than we do upstate, either in Sun River, or Church Road, or something on those 350 square meter lots. But it was still a whole lot different setback, setup, and uses that we have in these two and four-hector lots, which is what you're expected to have to have an RU4. So, here we are, putting these little tiny pieces of properties, little residential homes, which is, are fairly dense for their day, and we have them as RU4 designation. And only a few years before, they had all the rights that most property owners have in these regular designations. So, the zoning bylaw will reflect off of this OCP, but we need to make sure that we incorporate all these non-conforming pockets in Sook. And they're within the 23% growth area. So, you've got to keep in mind, that's where we're looking to keep growth and do infill. Well, they're incapable of infill without rezoning, because now, if they go to do all this rezoning, all stuff, everything becomes super costly. But if they had their old designation back from 2006, they might be able to subdivide a piece off, they might be able to do a suite over top of a garage, or things like that. And so, we have to be more flexible. And I think you're absolutely on the right track. But we have to keep in mind, even though I will go halfway with Counselor Casper on the ALR thing, I don't believe for a second that the 60, 100, and 140-acre farms are doable in today's world, because you, unless you're a corporation, you're not going to be able to afford to buy the land, for starters. And number two, you're not going to be able to afford to do any of the work to it. Those small farms they have, I mean, if these people come to the public markets and stuff, they don't own 100 acres of land. They own two, four, and six acres. And if there is the odd one-off that might own 20 or 30 acres, for the most part, they have to be small enough to be capable for the average family to be able to work them. So, I think that you need to talk to the ALR. If they're not going to allow us to do anything with those pockets of lands in the middle of our catchment area, then we need to talk to them about at least allowing us to get them to subdivide those down into maybe two, four, or six-acre ALR parcels that families can buy together. And ALR allows you, you know, usually two dwellings, one for one family member, one for a worker, so on and so forth. But that way, you could also get the road connectivity through there. Then, when you do the subdivisions, they would allow us to put in a few roads. So, even in Machosen and places like that, there are lots of five- and 10-acre farms that were allowed to be put in, and that allowed them to connect a lot of their areas, too. And these are right in the middle of our downtown area, in our sewer-specified area. And that would be the way to join things up, especially services. We need to loop water systems in Sook, just to keep our water flowing, so that you don't, it doesn't run into a dead-end spot where it has to be overchlorinated, and you get lousy water pressure and so on. But anyhow, I think you're on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haldane. Other comments from members of the public on the OCP?
Ellen Lures, five-five-two-six, Sook Road. It's interesting what Herb was talking about with ALR land, because we talked about that before. We talked about it in our OCP before, and it's been, unfortunately, what happened, this zoning bylaw was done without any people from the OCP to carry on what the ideal was with the OCP initially. And we never did, just for information's sake, we never did pass that OCP as a group. We weren't really finished with it. So, it went to staff, and then it, that was it, didn't come back to us. We never signed off on it, just for your information, because it wasn't really finished. But we did ask that people who were on the OCP would be on the zoning committee as well, to carry through the thoughts. And we did talk about the larger pieces of land, like the 140 acres and so on. And what we had asked is that we could meet with the ALC and talk to them about that, because I agree with what Herb was saying about the, those lands being very large, because it takes a lot of fuel and manpower to manage those. And so, making them into perhaps 10-acre lots would be a lot more feasible, and it would get more people on the farms as well. And still allowing that property knowing, but you have to know the land, and you have to know what it can grow and what it can do. And you still do need hay, even if it, it is not necessarily just growing fruits and vegetables. You need to have hay for animals. It's very important. I mean, that's, it's getting tougher and tougher to get hay, and the price is going to go up even higher. And I mean, if you've seen in the Prairies what's happened in Edmonton, when they got flooded out, they didn't have any hay. Manitoba had to bring hay into Edmonton, and vice versa. You need to have hay fields. In Britain, they make sure they have hay fields. So, you can't just say fruits and vegetables. There's more to it, because animals are a necessary part of our diet. For some people, they're not, but they are. So, before you start doing anything with the lands, you really need to understand them. You need to have people that understand the lands, what they can grow, and what's needed. That's, and we did have a big meeting with, about the agricultural plan when, I think, when we first incorporated. And it was, it was very good, and there was a lot of input into that. And that's, so that information is available to staff, I'm sure, because there's a lot of input in that. There's a lot of farmers came, and a lot of growers, and people that eat the food and so on. And yes, an economy can be built around it. And yes, Herb is right, there's no money in farming. It's a difficult situation. And that's another thing that I talked to Danica about as well, that allowing certain uses on agricultural land that allow some income to come besides growing food, because it is not enough money to be sustainable. So, that's why the pressure goes on to those lands to develop, because they, I mean, when you're making $5,000, $6,000 a year, and you work a lot, it's not what one would call sustainable living. So, you need to allow other things to happen. And I think that that's what happened with the Shaw property. Initially, there was discussion about putting on an industrial site. And we were agreeable to that, because it allowed some use for a portion of it, but still keep it in the ALR. And just using, allowing some uses on there that won't destroy the land, but still make it available for the future, but allowing something to happen that gives some income, whether it's putting mobile homes on, or tent trailers, or whatever it is, you know, allowing people to do different things. We talked about even with some of the lands up there in the green portion there, where Wickham's property up there, they have these beautiful ponds up there, and with trout, if you've ever been up there, it's absolutely fantastic. And allowing things like hunting lodges, or fishing lodges, and things like that, that still allow people to keep the land in the ALR, but allow them to do different things that they can, they can have an income, so that they keep the land. So, I'd hate to see the OCP changed so much that it, or restricted. I agree, it has to be more flexible. So, don't restrict it. Make it flexible enough that different things can happen. But especially on agricultural lands, we have to be very careful that we don't restrict them, that they can do the- I'll give you an example. On our property was, could do intense agriculture, intense agriculture with the setbacks, as Herb was talking about. It allowed us to do intense agriculture in about 10 square feet on our property because of setbacks. So, I, you know, I could put, I could put 10 pigs in 10 square feet. So, you really have to watch what you do with setbacks and things like that. But that comes into zoning, that has not OCP. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lures. That was very insightful. Other comments from members of the public? I'll call for a second and third time. Okay, so I'd like, anything else from members of council at this point? So, I believe there is a recommendation available from staff, and that is that the committee recommends to council to receive the May 29 OCP review update for information, and provide staff with support for a neighborhood approach to planning, revised land use designation, and descriptions for inclusion as part of the revised OCP. So, that's been moved by Counselor Parkinson. Ms. Rice, do you have what is required from council? Like, well, this is going to our regular council meeting. Just, have you received some direction of sorts to continue? I think what I do also hear that we would like to see is broader community engagement occur, and so, maybe at the regular council meeting, if there's a sense of what that would look like, so that we can share that through networks and whatever, and we just know what to expect in the months to come. I think when you were at the night market, or staff was at the night market, and other various points throughout the community on set dates, having the set dates, locations, and all that was very helpful, and to be more out in the community, rather than just here in the municipal hall. So, if that could be available at that time.
I would be happy to prepare a public consultation, I don't know, opportunity, or several opportunities, if that is what council would like, maybe looking at having something online that people can provide feedback as well to the maps and designations, and then attending the, if we want to do the night market, and/or an open house, or something like that. I'm totally happy to do that.
And the other, I don't know if it's possible, but given that there's the different neighborhoods designed, it may or may not be feasible in all of them. But if there's some sort of event occurring in a particular neighborhood, that might be an idea where you're in that neighborhood and can draw feedback from that particular neighborhood. But it just depends on what logistically would work at the time, but something to think about anyway.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, anything further from council? The motion's been moved. So, speaking to the motion, I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much for all of your efforts, Ms. Rice. It's extremely valuable work, so thank you. Okay, so the next item up is Community Development and Engagement Committee. This was a matter that I raised at our last regular council meeting. Just, I'm just going to pull it up here, just in terms of feedback that's been coming through, and just the need to sort of get more of a hands-on, working group formed. We just sort of quickly put together this draft terms of reference, and so, it's just here for council to see, maybe to add to. It's a standing committee, and defined that way means that it allows for up to three members of council, plus myself, ex officio, to be on the committee, matched by three members of the public. A select committee is also possible. That only allows for one member of council and the rest to be public, and that would be in a non-voting capacity. So, I thought I would start this way. And the idea would be to really, to get hands-on here. What I don't want to see is this turn into where people go to have variances approved, or any sort of zoning amendments. That all must remain the business of council. What we were looking to do here was to bring people together to actually identify where there are problems in the process, and how we can look at fixing them, what policies are working well, and which ones aren't. How is that 24-hour business license, or 48-hour business license process working? What can we actually do to make it work, or not, because it's there? So, we either, we either have it, or we throw it out. It has to be one way or the other. There's also been a number of large and small folks that have been looking to do projects that have had concerns, and staff has also raised a number of concerns. So, how can we actually work together and address this? Because I think what is happening is the status quo right now is not working well. It needs to be improved. So, that's where, when appropriate, other members of staff may be brought in, maybe we can also have it set up that if someone has a situation that they would like to bring to the committee's light, kind of like we have a delegation here, they could present to this committee and just say, here's what's happened, and so forth. And then, so that's where the other staff. So, it is right now tentatively set. So, if we just sort of go through this, we have the purpose, the role, what the membership looks like, a term, and I just put in six months, because the idea is, is that the committee meets, it gives items back to council in a rather timely fashion. And everything has to come back to council, because otherwise, in- because otherwise, in a short timeframe, we think we fixed something because we talked about it at length, and then we find out that we haven't. We run into that with the amenity policy, I believe, where it sat at committee level, never went back to council. And then there's confusion as to what has actually been fixed, and we found out that it wasn't. The staff support there, as noted, we have the whole various departments noted. And then for the moment, I've put in 9:30 to 11:30 on the first Wednesday at every month. All community, all the community charter prevails as well as all of our committee policies and the like. And that's something that's very important for the chair to have a firm grasp on for proceedings. It won't be me, it'll have to be a member of council. So feedback from members of council, Counselor Longens, then Parkinson.
Thank you. I have a question about the committee name in relation to the roles. And it's probably just because my past work has been in community development, engagement, but it has nothing to do with building, development, and engagement. So when I see this, I see something totally different, and I'm just mixing it up. So that's kind of the lens that I put on it, which is my problem, but I'm hoping to kind of get some clarity on it because I see the topics for discussion are more related to building, development. So would this also encompass things such as places and spaces, like the community center committee was working on?
No.
Okay, so I think then that...
We can change this name?
Yeah, the name just, it's, it's a little bit confusing if we were going to look at other committees that would deal with separate engagement pieces.
I think what that happened was, is that we just took the terms of reference for that former committee that was formed. And then I went through it and then couldn't think of a name at the time. But you are right, this name doesn't fit. And so maybe it should just be Building and Development Committee. I don't know, it's just not very exciting, but it doesn't have to be.
Or even Development Engagement?
Development Engagement Committee. We take the community part out.
I think it's the "and" really, that's mixing me up.
The "and"? Community Development Engagement? That seems really long.
Or just, yeah, Development Engagement? I don't know, that's just off the top of my head.
The Suk Development Committee. I don't know. Maybe, they, that can be, this, we're at committee the whole, so there may be something, that can be better wordsmithed. I think it's the case of, the name can come once the terms of reference, as long as that's what everyone is going with, then we can find an appropriate name. But I'm still interested in forming that Community Development Committee as it was. So that's something to also think about once we see because I think that that piece is still outstanding, objectives from the Parks and Trails Committee and ongoing connectivity in general, trail use and the like, it all still needs a place to land. So that's something to think about as well. Thank you. Counselor Parkinson?
Through your worship, when you talk about having the meetings on the first Wednesday, that would only be six meetings. So it seems like there's a lot of work to be discussed in such a short period of time.
So we can have, it depends on availability, so that's why we started with that. If the, but the whole intent is if the, if the committee is functioning, I mean, the timeline can always be extended. I just find that if you make it, that it doesn't expire, things can drag out. The idea is, is that we know that there's a problem, they need to be fixed. I think people already have solutions, so then it can be reassessed at that time and the work can continue.
And further to that then, so it's fine with the six months, but could it be that they meet the first Wednesday, but at the discretion of the chair? So if they needed further meetings to occur, that would be able to take place?
So you're suggesting, and then, so at the very end, the committee shall meet 9:30 to 11:00 on the first Wednesday of every month, comma, as well as at the discretion of the chair? So we can add that in? That seems reasonable. Anything else? Nope. Counselor Pearson?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the, the hour...